Call council meeting order August the 2nd, 2022. Any additions to the agenda? I'd like to put one on somewhere in here about to talk about.
We can do it under the park. You don't have to add it.
Okay, Kathleen?
So I came back this month to follow up. I was here at the end of June to propose a 10 house countywide development project, looking at having cities choose to participate. Stafford is on board, so that some type of housing program is going to go forward. It's just whether or not the city of St. John wants to participate and have any of those 10 houses located here in St. John. So it's building 10 houses. It'll be a mix of kind of the current house design and the design on a basement. There will also be the option if someone wants to build and can be pre-approved for financing, they could build a house of a different design that fits within the budget of what they're approved to have a mortgage for. The goal is to sell as many of these as possible, and houses will only be built in cities that choose to participate. So it's asking for a six-year financial commitment. So for St. John, that's $34,750 a year, adds up to $208,500 over the six-year period. He'd be guaranteed four houses, and there'd also be a land contribution. So either donated from the city, a land bank, or the city facilitating a private donation for the land. So I do need a decision tonight. All of us is getting everything forward so that we can move forward for our housing grant. So the pieces I still have to do is I have to be able to get financing, which means I need to know how much equity I have. I already know what I have from the county, I know what I have from Stafford. If we get the grant, I have enough to move forward with the 10 house project. So it's just whether or not St. John wants houses here within city limits. So that's kind of what the development agreement lays out, is looking at, you know, this is what we want to provide. It is contingent on getting that moderate income housing grant, but we need to be able to have the pieces in place to go after the funding.
So what if you don't get the grant?
So there's a grant cycle that closes at the end of September, which is what we're pushing for. There'd be another one that's going to open early next year that we could have potential for, which is why, like, contributions wouldn't start till like mid next year. So there's a good chance, we have a good relationship with KRSI, we're not too worried about getting funding, and just whether it will be having notice in, like by the end of the year, or whether we'll know next late spring.
But you need commitments of land before you apply the grant?
I do, because I have to have, I have to show control of like property, so that's where the cities, as it's outlined in kind of the agreement, like you would pledge land, and that gives us enough site control to show that we can move forward with the project. So that's one of the requirements to do the grant, is that we have to show site control. We also have to show our other financing. So that's where I need to know which cities are participating, and I need to know what kind of loan terms I can get from a bank. So that's why I need a commitment now. Like I can't wait any longer.
Is there a bank that will, will properties store a few lots?
We could probably put two or three.
You need to turn out. Two down there, two across the street. Right, Marshall?
Yeah, seven. Seven, ten. That's not wrong.
And if you pledge land now, that could be changed at a later point. That's kind of outlined in the agreement where if you committed and then stuff changes with either tax sales or other things coming up, that could, you could change where the houses go or what land gets pledged.
So if you don't find a buyer?
Then the houses will be rented. Economic development will retain ownership and rent them.
So what, what houses would be built if you can't find anybody to rent or to buy them? And then you go forward with, build the house? What would they be, just like the other ones?
So my goal would be to start by building the house on foundations, because again, as you see, that's the cost of constructions only go up. So if we can get in some of the houses on unfinished basements first, that's where I would go. If you find people to buy them, then we can build more of those. If we can't find people to buy the house on a basement, then you look at putting it on a slab if it's going to stay a rental. So.
John went through the contract. If you guys would like me to read his response. Contribution does not mean a guarantee of housing. Ego-deb will be required to raise a specific amount of money before it can start its program. See page four, as she just said. The city takes the chance that costs will rise, making it more difficult to complete the project. City may find itself contributing additional funds for the project in order to receive the fruits of its initial investment. If funds are not available to finish unfinished, but started, houses may become the city's responsibility. The city will have to pay ego-deb of fair market value for incomplete projects. Value is deducted from unused constructions. Unused contributions return to the city. Page eight. Termination can only, termination can be only by mutual agreement, which I don't particularly like, but understand. The contract is subject to the cash basis law and annual appropriation if the money is unavailable. No obligation to develop. See page 9.5. I don't see anything in this agreement that requires development. I prefer language that allows the city a refund if development does not occur. Governing law provision should be, should remove federal court. If the city wants to approve the money tonight, I think it should be contingent on finessing the agreement.
And what I will say is that it does show that you guys will be refunded. So under the termination, like if we're not going to develop, this would terminate us. And so under 8.1, all, any and all property upon which construction development or improvements has not yet commenced shall be transferred to the city. And we'll also have to return, number three says, any and all portions of the cash contributions set forth, which have already been paid by the developer, shall be refunded. Top said any stuff. Like if we already started construction and you guys chose to terminate, then that's where the cash goes. But as it's written, and again, we can talk more with Johnsons, obviously he's not here tonight, but it is that if we don't develop, it does say that this would terminate, and you guys would not be out any cash or out any land.
So if you don't find a buyer right away, and then it goes to you building the house, you're renting the house, is there a page?
We still buy.
Page and income base.
There's no, there's not an age restriction on any of this. It will be subject to moderate income housing, but those limits are high, and most people would meet them. So a single person could be making over $77,000 annually. A dual-person household would be over $88,000 annually, and that's adjusted gross income, so you can deduct certain expenses and stuff from your income. Three people would be at 99, over $99,000. A four-person household could be making 110 or more. And again, if you have kids and have deductions, then you could have a higher gross income than what we're looking at for qualifying. Five-person household is 118.9. A six-person household would be 127.8, and a seven-person household would be 143.3. So like there's kind of that upper limit of looking at for the moderate side of things. But based off the wages in the area, and knowing it's the adjusted gross income, most people will qualify for the, to either rent or buy.
So that's what it would be.
No, so, so the recitals, that is just stating like, why are we here? And how to, like, economic, that's showing that economic development has a capacity. Like, we know we can carry out a 10 house project, because we're currently carrying out an unrelated 10 house project that's similar to what we're proposing. But that does not apply to the houses we're talking about.
There's nothing that really states that if you don't develop. I mean, it just says if we mutually agree for termination. But it doesn't say anything about even if you guys don't develop, that all that's turned back over.
Well, I mean, this is locking us in. We are saying that we have to develop. Like that's part of the agreement. Like we're agreeing to develop.
It says there's no obligation to develop on 9.2. Nothing herein shall be construed as creating an obligation to developer to develop the project. The party shall cause a land contribution in cash, contribution to occur to the developer once the aforementioned additional grant funding and financing is secured by the developer. So it takes you 10 years to get the funding, and we're still contributing land.
I can talk to John about that. That's not what our lawyer said when he gave me this proposal. So again, I'm happy to visit it with your guys' lawyer to make sure the legal language is there. Our intent is that if we're not developing, we do not retain any contribution or the land.
Like John said, it could make it worse, contingent on change of the contract, I guess. Change the contract code one.
Well, I mean, it's just like you said. Yeah, the wording.
Yeah. So what about, like, if the grant funding first round doesn't go, he'll go for the second, and that doesn't work? Do you go for more?
Well, then I'd revisit with you guys about where we're at in the process. Because it's contingent on us being able to secure that grant funding. Like that is part of that section nine, is that we have to secure the funding, and that's what locks it in. So if I don't have it before the first contribution, the first cash contribution happens, and none of the land will transfer until we're 60 days out, at least. Like, we're actually ready to start the construction. So if we're hitting the deadline and don't have the grant funding secured, then we'd revisit with you about what the options are.
So is this, but would this agreement still be in place technically then? Or does it cease after the first two rounds of the grant funding?
I mean, I think it'd be coming, and we'd have to discuss term, like it'd be terminate, looking at terminating it.
Terminating. And if, say you get two houses sold, two houses for rent, the money from the house is sold, go back into the pool to build more, right? So are those guaranteed to be in St. John? Or do they go into the big, that separate pool?
So how it works is looking at the cash flow. I need two houses to sell to be able to start additional construction after the 10 that's proposed, if that makes sense. And so the houses will go where the house is sold. So like, St. John would need to sell two houses, and then we'd look at getting you that fifth house then. If we had built four, and two rented and two sold, then we'd look at getting a fifth house right away. I mean, the fifth house would happen once the completion of these 10 initial happened too, is kind of part of the, like, and I'm still waiting to hear from Hudson, who I was at their city council. Their city clerk called today, and we missed because I was in meetings, I'm in Maxwell's meeting tonight. And I'm supposed to call in after I finish here, so I don't have that. But looking at it, we would, we're committed to building the initial 10, has to happen immediately. So we'd look at, once we have that, you'd get dislocated for the fifth house in St. John, once two of the houses here sell.
So where, wherever the houses are being sold, that's where the priority?
That's where future development will happen. So if only you and Stafford choose to participate, then we'll be looking at spreading out the 10 houses between the two towns. So whether that's we look at reallocating, or we look at where our house is selling for that. But again, if two houses sell here, you're going to be looking at a bit, an additional after whatever kind of that guarantee comes in.
But St. John, what if Stafford doesn't get any sold, and then it are sold?
Then the housing will continue to happen here.
The focus will be St. John then?
Yes. For where the house is sold. That's, and that's something that they know and are aware of. I mean, that becomes the thing. We can only continue to kind of develop where there's the demand for the houses. So that's kind of the trade-off of how do you help meet the demand? And that's where you can end up selling the properties.
The, the money's off of the rent, two rental houses, does that stay in that town? Or does that go into the pool of economic development?
So because we're going to have to take out like a mortgage for half of this project, I'm only going to have, like, I'm only going to have about a million dollars secured, and it's going to take about $2 million to do this project. So all the rental income goes towards us paying off that mortgage. Like if we sell a house, then that allows us to pay down the mortgage, to do new financing for us to do an additional house.
And then all the rentals, based on wherever they're built?
Yeah, so all of the rental, all the rental income goes to paying on the debt of the project.
But you're only going to sell two houses?
No, I'll sell as many. If someone, if we have four buyers here in St. John for all four houses, I will sell all four houses, and we'll look at getting two more, or three more. Like, you know, we'll be able to keep doing that. So it's two is the number that kind of pushes us into being able to do the continued development. So if we sell two houses and build a fifth, if that fifth house sells, we do a sixth. If all of them sell, then that's that many more houses that can be built. It would perpetuate kind of the thing, because we'd have the cash to continue doing construction. But the rentals really would allow us to then pay on the debt if we're not able to sell houses.
So if you, if you can't find a buyer right away to build the house, you have to build it yourself, rent it. What style of house is that going to be? Is that going to be similar to what you have, but you have to work that?
So we'd be looking at, so talking about kind of the current design, it's looking at, we have the three-bedroom, two-bath house that we've been building on a slab from our previous funding. So our goal is to look at putting that on an unfinished basement, because that helps with kind of storage and having the ability to have two egress windows and to somewhat finish that out later. So that would be the house that I would start with, because that's going to be probably more appealing to people if they're interested in buying. I mean, if we had someone right out of the gate who wanted to build it on a slab, we'd do that. And then I'd be seeing from there where things go. If someone wants to build a house of their own design, they would come with kind of a design and who they want to build the house. And we could then help carry the construction cost side of it, and then they would take a mortgage once it's complete and buy it. And then again, that, you know, that would help perpetuate more houses. So if you had people doing higher, more expensive houses, that would further more housing development too. But we know what we're working with and kind of the incomes in the area. This is what we can build and then operate if they don't sell. So that's what we're looking at price point, and why we're looking at the current design.
Sir, did you get all your questions?
Yeah, if they rent them, then they are still for sale?
Yep. We'd rent them, and if there is someone who wanted to, precious about buying, we would sell them.
So fun.
Well, it's being taken out of the 1% by the end of the year, leaves us at $295,000.
And that's with projected?
That's what the grocery store and the mayor bill.
But that's also with projected money going into it by the end of the year, when that's just what?
Yeah. I don't project it.
Does that count, take care of the speed of doing?
It's already out.
Well, it's, yeah.
It's just, it should be until you see that.
But it's, it's a rented, then they're not, are they taxed? So they're rented?
They're not on a property tax rule if they're rented.
I guess you would just tell them to sell, actually. I don't know. Do I actually have no return? Quite likely.
I mean, the return is going to be your people coming to town and creating.
Long-term in shopping stores.
It's not going to be a city moneymaker. I mean, you're going to have your utilities, but it's not a moneymaker. It's a benefit for the community moving forward.
Yeah, just having places for employees, just their, their workers. So best-case scenario is selling the homes. Worst-case would be just renting them and hope to sell them.
Yeah.
And those houses would be on fair market value, or like?
It would be fair, fair market value.
The benefits of bringing more people into the town is having housing for people is obvious.
People that own crappy houses aren't letting go of them, and when you do get a hold of them, they're a lot worse than you imagined.
So what about if we did three houses that were just a little bit more, maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit more expensive, I guess? Maybe a little bit nicer? Just, just throw it out there. I mean, you know, knock on your house that you've been building, but you know, maybe that's not going to leave so many. And maybe they have a little extra then.
And that's where, I guess our goal would be to try to pre-sell or find buyers. The, the challenge with building more expensive homes, if you don't have a buyer lined up, if they are harder to sell in the area, and if someone is looking to pay that price, they usually want more customization in kind of the layout or design. And so, I mean, we're looking at a minimum of a, you know, $50,000 to $100,000 difference between, say, like the current house on a basement versus most of your standard moderate income housing that you see in towns that are going up. So when you see the house that has the garage and the basement, I mean, most of the starting points are in the upper 200s to $300,000 range. And so then it's the question of like, can people afford that? So, I mean, that's where the goal will be, again, if we can get some of these pieces in place, if I can start lining up buyers, because that's another piece of it. If we have people wanting to build, we are happy to facilitate having other designs. But if, if there's not a guarantee, it's hard to rationale, because then the rent, you'd have to charge in a place like that if you weren't able to sell it. Also makes it challenging.
Yeah, I, I can get it.
What, what did, like, the houses you're building out, what are they renting for?
So this one, because it's kind of that low-income program, they're $500 or $550 a month, I think, depending, and all kinds, depends how stuff goes, we'd be looking at probably like $700 for this lab, and I think we'd be looking like $850 for the unfinished basement or so. Those are kind of the rough numbers right now. Some of that also affects, you know, what we have in terms of equity going into the project to be able to have the rents needed to pay on whatever note we take from doing the development if we don't sell.
Do you guys carry insurance on that houses? Do you rent them? Is that up to the rent?
Sorry, what?
Or is that up to the rent?
So we, like, we have the essential homeowners insurance on all of the houses. I mean, we encourage renters to have renters insurance, and like if they wanted a swimming pool or trampoline, we require renters insurance, but we don't, they don't have homeowners insurance. That's our responsibility.
Counsel, got anything else to order, stuff? Any more questions?
I wish John was here. I mean, he gave his, yeah, I mean, he just wants his points to be changed, and it sounds like they were under the assumption that it's going to be the same way. Are you okay with us, like, if we do move forward, are you okay with us, like, agreeing to a contingent on John going over the contract and, and addressing his concerns?
We're sure we got that, got the funds over.
I mean, there's $295,000 in there.
What happens if midstream, things go south and you generate them? I'm not seeing a blue in the camera.
They have to go through that, I would say, for that.
How easy are they? About, you know?
How are they?
How bad are they?
Right. You know, what's, Stafford, what's in the turnout? I think some people may think that's a little bit, a little bit much for making rent, but on the upside, you gotta think.
The houses are bigger than people think, though. When you drive by, the house doesn't look as big as they are. Like, I mean, it's, it's a three-bedroom house with two bathrooms. It's, it's a nice space. Like, I really think people need to go in it before, before they, I mean, for what you can build, I would definitely look for a house.
I mean, the efficiency of those houses, like, just if you save on utility, I would think a substantial amount really, you know, maybe you're paying a little bit over rent, you're not going to use those utilities if you were.
How much insulation is there, or you could?
The roof has like an R41, and I'm not sure on the wall. So it's a lot of insulation. They get, we get, they have to get energy audited by Midwest Energy before they become livable units, and, I mean, he hasn't seen houses this tight. It's kind of the gist I've got from him. They have a ventilation system because they are so tight to help move their in and out. So, I mean, you can't, like, if you're in one of the houses, you can't always tell that it's raining, because you don't hear the rain. They're very quiet houses from that standpoint. He, they do, I think, regular, you know, spray foam, it's a combination of insulation to get the reading.
So tight, they have to compare outside, inside, keep it the same. I mean, I, I think, I think the returns have been over a long period of time. And we are lacking housing for sure. I think there's people that want to live here, but, you know, creating houses and they have a plan, but I guess. I agree. There's some minor things that maybe not get easy about, but if we think there's an issue, a housing issue, I mean, I guess I don't know another way to get anything accomplished without trying to team up with people. I guess that's just my opinion. I don't know if we can get private investment to make as far as someone could build to make a substantial difference, but I think we can probably afford it. I mean, it's a lot of money over six years. I think if we can address some of the things that John has brought up in his review of the contract, might be okay with moving forward.
You, you have to have a commitment tonight?
Like, and I can be contingent on having the contracts revised.
I would like to see that. If we make a commitment, I want to see some revisions if John is recommending.
Yep. I'm happy to do that and come back. But, and you kind of need to know if you're on board or not, you know, like.
Mark, is that you making a motion?
I, I would make a motion to, to go forward with the housing development agreement between City St. John and Stafford County Economic Development for six years, $34,750 for four houses contingent on John's changes to the agreement. Second.
Got a motion on the table, and a second. Is there any more discussion on getting on board with that program on development? Build four houses over a period of six years, $34,750 a year?
Yeah, do you want to work on that?
No.
I think we're going to put that in the election.
For the 1%?
Any more discussion? Got a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? All opposed. Pass the street to two. Sarah Marshall, opposed.
Thank you, guys.
Let's see, again, two minutes, regular council meeting, July 19, 2022.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from regular council meeting, July 19, 2022. Second.
Got a motion, Mark seconds it. All in favor? All opposed. Pass the final. Appropriation ordinance, 8-2 of 2022, $93,422.27.
I'd make a motion to approve appropriation ordinance dated August 2, 2022, in the amount of $93,422.27. Second.
Got a motion from Kyle, second from Marshall. All in favor? All opposed. Pass the final. Department head, Jeff's not here.
Jeff did want me to tell you Midstates is here and, um, around tonight. We'll be here Monday to start going over the engine. We should be firing everything up here directly, so.
Any questions? More than that? Water department, Jason's not here. Anybody know anything about the water tower?
Yes, our, um, permit got approved. We're just waiting on the company to get us back on schedule.
Still there? Old gunner here, is it?
Yes, when we go, when?
Anything else on the law? Street and park department?
So you had a question earlier, and I prepared myself. Leaning feed is made out of nitrogen, potash, and potassium. And the difference between nitrogen is nitrogen as an element and nitrate is a compound of nitrogen and oxygen. So no, I'm not putting nitrate on, on those parts.
I thought them.
I want to address that a little further. Wasn't the goal, when we done the well stuff, to transfer this part over off of treated water?
That's correct, yes.
So I actually have a message with Jason and Jeff about that as well. And he's, Jeff said. Down by Cornwall?
What about Brown Park?
All, all the wells have to be.
I thought they were splitting it off of the well down there.
No, the, the well down there was done for the bulk water. And then it could have, it could be to where the Brown Park, or, excuse me, Cornwall Park could be ran off of that well as well. That's the county.
Maybe if it's bulk water from the weed apartment, the county paid for it. And said, you're on your land and tie it onto the well.
And hadn't ever been done.
But at one time, we were doing something up here to fill the swimming pool and to take Brown Park off of it.
Well, you can come right out of the wellhouse.
That's what they were going to do, was come out of the wellhouse and trench it and tie Brown Park in so that it didn't run through the tree.
Isn't that how, like, fill it with a?
That's how they filled the pool, yes. But they were also going to water Brown Park that way.
I'll check with Jason and Jeff about that. Because I know that he's a fire hose.
I know that, I know that to fill the pool. But at one time, they were talking about tying Brown Park into that well so that it was not, that we weren't treating the water to, up to right back on that. Because that was the thing, the same thing, because it was easier to do it down there and up there because we had a well there and the county wanted to put a well.
Right.
And then we would just continue to just use treated water on the city square. Because otherwise, we'd have to put a well in down there.
I will find out and get back to you.
I thought that was the plan all along up there.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I think they were going to tie it to.
They were just going to tie it on to it.
Before it went to, where they tied it to nitrate.
Yeah. I thought that was what the goal was.
I think that was it, when we put the nitrate.
Probably be the best plan.
Well, yeah, because there's no sense to treat water and dump it right back on the park.
Save the water. It sounds like we were very close to being, you know, taking the water, right?
Yeah.
Very close, yeah. On your end, would take a day of trenching and just connect it.
Yeah, that probably.
I wasn't jumping on you either. Okay.
I just enjoyed finding facts out.
Anything else on parks, streets? Police chief, Tori? Fire chief, Mike? City administrator, Jamie? City attorney ain't here. Old business. Everybody talk about that stuff. Property code violations, truck parking, engine, power plant, swimming pool, vacuum truck repairs, sewer lagoons?
Um, we need to talk about the back truck. I do have a quote for key equipment as well. He stopped by, assuming we're meeting, meeting watched. So, um, he brought a quote over for 85. But we have been talking about the one on Purple Wave. So if you guys want to, we can either set up a max bid price tonight, if that's something you guys aren't wanting to buy, or we can have a special meeting the 10th and see where the bids are at. And you guys can do it then. I will be out of town the 11th for surgery in Wichita.
So they're pricing us a used truck.
Correct. Yes.
Do you know what we give for the other one?
Yes.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Is it to the city or the city?
Yes.
No, we bought it on Purple Wave.
Yeah, but the city holds the truck.
Yeah, but we, we'd.
We paid for the way it was brought.
Yep.
Ten years ago.
Oh, what, close.
Twenty-two, five fifty.
Twenty-two, five.
What was that?
Seven.
Seven, oh, about.
So did someone talk to, uh, Jason?
Yeah, I called. Austin basically said they're getting rid of it because they are going to a certain brand. He said it has been used every day. I mean, it, it's been used, but it works good. He said he's not going to say we won't have issues along the way, but there's nothing major. Jason did go over Friday. I have a video if you guys want to see it. He went over, they kind of tested everything. He said it looks good, so.
Right, just set a ceiling on that, pay on that, right?
That's what I think we don't need.
So that'd be something that'll be able to determine worth that ceiling.
The thing about it is, the old truck is a mechanical truck. And I'm afraid we're having the same problem with a new truck and you do the old truck unless you spend some time, somebody that's going to spend some time and learn how it works and explain how to run it. Because I think that's all truck. It needs some maintenance. They've got floats and stuff inside them that has to shut things off. If it doesn't shut it off, you're in trouble. And I can kind of question, maybe it does have some issues with that.
What year is the one?
From eighty-five, I think.
I don't know if she.
Eighty, maybe.
Yeah, eighty-five.
Something, me, me talking about the price on this Purple Wave truck, you know, the second series?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to do that now? Are we going to discuss anything else? Property code, we're just waiting on the title of the list, right?
Yep.
We gave them what we want. They're going to do the commitment and send it to us, right?
Yes. And then after that, I'll get letters going to people.
Okay, good.
I talked to Brooke today and he has been super busy the last week and said he will get prices to us as soon as he can.
What's on the property code?
Just waiting on title.
All of them. Which property?
All of them.
All of them? And we can't do anything of land bank and just?
The land bank has nothing to do with the property code violations that we've been doing. It's all, it's, everything that we've been doing has been city-initiated. The only thing that, the only properties of the land bank that we've done are the prop, the two properties that we bought off tax auction was last year.
Did we get reimbursed by individual?
Yes.
In full?
Um, ten.
Is that, uh, full?
No. Payments for the rest.
How much is it?
Like fifteen hundred, two thousand, maybe. I mean, it was a good transaction.
Oh, for the one that got tore down?
Yeah, that's probably. Yeah.
Do you want to keep it?
Okay, that's great. Yeah. Don't matter, we can play it. If you don't pay it, it's property taxes and you have to pay it eventually.
Yeah.
If you made, uh, you, you finished off, you'd think so, you know. I would, I guess I would make a motion to amend the agenda to add a ten-minute, ten-minute executive session to cut, to discuss the purchase price, admitting price on the back truck on Purple Wave to the council mayor and city administrator. Second.
Got a motion and a second on the table. Executive session, all in favor? All opposed. Pass the final.
I would make a motion to give Jamie the authority to spend up to the agreed-upon price for the back truck on Purple Wave.
Got a motion on the table and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Pass the final. I'll take another motion.
Cover everything? Make a motion to the chairman.
Got a motion, Marshall motion and a second on, uh, police chief. All in favor? All opposed.